Welcome to Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for September 4th, 2018. First item is salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved to second and to approve the agenda. Further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting?
I request we table the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that.
Requested to table the minutes of the last meeting. Okay, we don't really need to vote on that one. Department heads, committee chair update. Do we have any? No, okay, we'll move on. Hold the business, meeting times.
So, we had some discussions about changing it to another day of the week, later times. I think we had decided that, I think, effective tonight, it was going to start at 5:30. But you came to me a couple of weeks back and said that could make five work after all. A half hour really wasn't that much of a difference.
Well, I can try to make it, I can try to make it work. I think that's the consensus of the rest of the board. They'd like to stick with five, so I think we'll...
Leave it like that for now.
Yep.
You'll let us know otherwise, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Road Association Funds.
So, Elise, I was able to get your form together, put it on later head. We did check all the hyperlinks, everything seemed to work.
Oh, good.
So, it's ready. I don't know if it's something that the board has reviewed in its entirety and you're ready to release, or you want me to email you again a final copy. But I guess we wait, or do we want to make sure the road committee, the road commissioners have seen the last copy? One of your notes in the email questioned whether legal or not legal would look at it. Is that something that you wanted to happen?
I think it's quick enough for legal to take a quick peek. It's very simple.
Ed, you okay with that?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Yeah, anytime we pass it by him, I mean, it just gives it that one last blessing, so...
It was mentioned in an email to limit the dollar amount to 2,2500.
Yeah, that wasn't in your final draft, though.
No, I don't, I don't think it needs to be.
Okay.
That's my opinion. At first, I kinda, I disagreed with that because if somebody needs $10,000 worth of work, why, you know, let them, why not have it? But at the same time, it was an opportunity to see how much need there was coming forward, which I, I can see.
Right, because just because somebody applies for a certain amount doesn't mean that amount's going to be granted.
Right.
You can still do smaller amounts.
Yeah, you could always lower the amount.
I think it allows...
And is, is this something that you're going to essentially have available year round, or are we going to say, okay, forms will be ready from October 1st to December 1st, so that you know, you know, what's going to be for the remainder of the fiscal year? Or is it just going to be open to apply anytime and you deal with them? Because I guess, my thought is that if you deal with them one-on-one and there's no date, you're not going to know how much money you have left. You know, if we get one today and we don't get another one until the middle of November, you know, it could be the end of April and we've got, you know...
I would rather have some kind of timeline or date yearly, so, you know, we can kind of...
So, every year they'd be available during certain times?
Hmm, I just don't know. I mean, everybody probably wants to get working in the spring, summer, so it's something we probably stop maybe in the fall and have it, have it done by, you know, whatever, April.
We can get legal's opinion and you can make that decision next week. You don't have to do it now.
Yeah, good thing to think about.
Okay.
Cindy Hart, Road Committee, where it's a statutory fund, it will continue over and we'll be able to add to it every year.
Right.
So, I, I would suggest where we're getting going so late, that you let it go. We don't know what's going to happen, why put a deadline on it this year? Some roads won't be able to get fall cleanup done, or won't have their paperwork available, but may need it in the spring. So, I don't, I don't know why you have to cap it.
Well, if they needed it in the spring, I mean, we wouldn't be closing it until almost that time.
Well, I don't think it's the kind of fund that ever gets closed. That's what I'm saying, Kim.
Right, the fund doesn't close.
So, the money will roll over.
Right, the money's going to roll over. I think for bookkeeping-wise or keeping track...
Well, I think just to figure out how much do they want to spend at, you know, for the fiscal year, you're right, it will roll over if they don't spend it. But, you know, if they know they have $50,000 and they get $65,000 worth of applications, you know, they know how much they have to work with. By putting a timeline on it, it just gives them a better idea of how much and when, but...
The other problem with the timeline, you get problems in the springtime, washouts and, you know, winter issues.
That's when, that's right.
I mean, it could be like if you want money for April 1st, apply by December 31st.
Well, you don't know what's, you don't know what your damage is going to be, Elise. That's the problem with that.
You're right, you'll apply next year.
Right, but we need to have time to review it as well before, you know what I'm saying? They...
Yeah, we need to have a process. I'm assuming it's going to go to you people first, and then it'll go to the road committee. We will go out and look at it and, and see what's going on. That's the only way to really deal with this sort of thing. And we can work out the final, then we'll make a recommendation to you, and you make the final decision. Does that sound...
Something to think about for next week?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Guess we'll have to draft a policy or guidelines or something.
Yeah, something for it.
Yeah, I think we're probably going to need to.
Okay. All set on that?
Yep.
Property Maintenance Survey.
So, we have these available through the end of August. I made you guys copies. So, question one, do you support the formation of an ad hoc committee to explore the need to update the current Acton zoning ordinance? 114 people said yes, 150 said no. Do you feel that properties that cluttered with trash, garbage, and junk devalue other properties? 155 said yes, and 110 said no. It's interesting to see that more people said that they do think it devalues it, but at the same time, they don't support you doing anything about it. Would you be in favor of an ordinance that requires them to remove it? 125, yes, 138, no. How many people actually only wanted to be on the committee was 30 out of all of those. And then, I think the most important question there, do you feel the subject of property maintenance in the Town of Acton should be left alone? 146, yes, 117, no. So, looking for a direction, I mean, close in, you know, but looking for direction from the board as far as if we're going forward with anything there?
I'd say the town's spoken.
Yeah, it wasn't an official vote, but it was a way, just to get some information.
No, but it was a good way to see if we needed to move forward, and I think these numbers state that overall, people are pretty happy the way things are. You're right, you know, the first two do kind of flip-flop a little bit.
Yeah.
So...
I think it kind of speaks volumes, so that's what they think, but this is what they want you to, but they don't want you to do anything about it.
Right.
Right, so, all right, so remove it from the agenda?
Okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, all set?
I just, that's a lot of people that are, want to be on a committee.
It is, actually.
I know.
That's not bad.
30 to be on a committee?
Well, it seems to be on a committee.
Well, I mean, it says that you agree that a committee should be formed, are you willing to serve? I mean, 30 out of, what, 300?
Yeah, yeah.
But we've got, we, the Mary Grant needs a committee member, or, you know?
True, Warrant and Finance, we have an alternate.
What's that, the Warrant and Finance? We got some open seats and there's 30 people out there serving, ready to serve. Come forward.
That's great. Generator truck specs. Oh, I missed one, I missed personnel policy. Backup one.
So, we brought this to you a couple of weeks back to add the piece in about the HSA, now that the town's not paying 100% of the employees. Since then, you were going to review concerns that you may or may not have regarding it. Kim had some thoughts last week that she shared with you in the workshop regarding other employees being able to earn PTO and flex time off, such as road employees. So, wanted to see what the other board members thought, and if you had other concerns or changes for the policy.
As, I was going to say, as far as the PTO, I think we're going to disagree on this because I feel like there's other part-time employees in the town that do work regularly that don't get it, that we would have to open it up to.
Right, and that's, you know, that's what I meant, you know, all, you know, all part-time.
I think, yeah, she didn't mean just road, she meant all part-time.
No, not just road, but all, you know, all the part-time is what I meant, so...
So, you'd be looking at, so the transfer station already gets it, town hall staff gets it, fire department, boys...
How many people really would it involve that don't get it?
Well, it would involve the road employees. We've got two employees here that are less than 21 hours that don't accrue any. And I don't, I don't know how it would affect the fire department, if at all.
I don't think it would.
I don't think so.
You really only got two full-timers over there and everything else is...
Right, and they both get benefits, so...
Yep.
So, I guess, what are your thoughts on how it would be, it would, you would use the same system and let them earn it based on the amount of hours worked?
Right.
So, that's an average of the entire year. That's how the policy's written now, but it's just got the set amount of 21 hours. Ed?
Well, I mean, we got the policy in place now. It's, it's worked all along. I haven't heard anyone else bring it up. I appreciate you bringing it up. I don't know whether we have the money budgeted in there to do it right now.
Well, I mean, I, you know, the money's budgeted, the road commissioners, and, you know, even like myself, the town hall staff, we would just have to make it, make do. I mean, because if they earn it, we would have that line to pay it out of, which is, you know, it would cut back on...
I guess I'd want to know more as far as, what, you know, what's, what's it actually going to cost the town?
And how would you know that? Because you have to figure out what people are working, right?
You'd have to look and, look back and see what a year was.
We'd have to take, have the treasurer run some reports as far as, yeah, average how many employees and how much they would gain and how much that would cost to pay out.
Do you have one, one or, one employee upstairs that's part-time?
Two town hall employees that are less than 21 hours that don't get benefits.
All right.
And then, whatever road guys...
Okay.
Dave?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't believe this is a good idea. This is nothing that I came up with. And we have, we have part-time employees, some, matter of fact, some of these guys have actually had other jobs. So, I mean, this is just a part-time gig. I'm just afraid of, you're opening up a can where you're going to have guys out there just getting their hours in, just to get their hours in, to get their vacation time, and I don't want to see that. Of course, myself, most of the employees work for myself privately, and the Town of Acton, they work very, very few hours for the Town of Acton. And that just opens up a quagmire between my private stuff and town stuff. And then you've got guys who are going to get more hours than the other guys. Those guys are getting time, and these guys aren't getting time. I really don't...
Well, that happens, I mean, people work different hours here, so you work more, you earn more.
But I've always said the road crew is not the same as, you guys have set hours here.
I thought it would be a good idea because, I mean, you, you personally have said it's very hard to keep people during the winter. It's, it's, we don't give them anything.
I, I keep people through the winter because I find them other things to do other than the Town of Acton.
But, I mean, I've heard you, you know, heard you voice your concerns about how hard it is to keep.
No, the pay, the pay was the problem, and you guys took away our time and a half last year, and I just lost one guy for snowplow in this year because of that. And obviously, you guys weren't concerned about it then, but this year, this, this summertime, giving these guys vacation time on guys who might only average 10 hours a week, if that, just doesn't make a lot of sense when they're not able to get Bennies or anything like that unless they work 21 hours. So, you're going to make an exception for one, but not for another. It just doesn't really add up to me, and I don't believe, I just don't believe it's a good idea.
Well, it's not one, it would be several different people that don't get anything.
I don't believe it's a good idea, and, you know, you know, I've been doing this job for 10 years, and I figure out how to keep my crew. They would rather make more money per hour than worrying about a couple of days here and their paid time off, so, plus, there's guys who get their time off, they, they go into unemployment.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
The only thing I considered adding to the policy would be perhaps a line that says you will not be paid for, and this can change, just to deal with when somebody either quits or resigns, that they don't get paid all of their vacation time? Maybe there's a cap on it, or...
I think that Michelle, you've had this conversation with Michelle, and I think that based on, and let me double-check before, before we make any decisions, that if it's earned by an employee, based on what's earned, that you legally have to pay it out.
Oh, okay.
We went through that with, with the Department of Labor's, another individual.
Okay.
I'm not sure that you can, you can cap that out, but let me double-check on what you can and can't do, and I'll bring that back to you.
All right.
Okay, now we're down to generator, generator truck specs.
I'm still working on putting the specs together. Table that for next week.
Okay. On both of those?
Please.
Okay. Wilson Shores.
Wilson Shores. Okay, so, saga continues where we left off with this, so just to kind of recap, so we're on the same page, so we have 19 property owners that all believe, that all have 1/19th ownership in Lot 18, which we call common lots. The question has come up was, the question the board instructed me to get an answer to last week is, why is the, what was the?
Machado.
Machado, why was Machado, why is a property in Lot 18 listed in Machado's name if she's not an owner, or does she own any piece of that? I spoke to the town's attorney again, and I also spoke to the assessing firm, and she does not own any portion of Lot 18. She has given up all 1/19ths, all 19 of 19 pieces of that lot, she does not own it. It is common practice that when the original subdivision is done, and the subdivision comes from that original person, that that common lot is left in the last name. We have changed it to Wilson Lake Common Lot, so this won't happen again, but it is important for the board to know that there are a few other common lots. It's just easier to refer to that subdivision plan, but she doesn't own it, there's nothing assessed to her, that's why it had a zero value, so the town was not losing out on anything as far as the rest of the matter in regards to her ability to give people right to travel over it. I'll go back to my original statements, that it is in fact a civil matter, and you need to take it up with that individual or private attorneys. Nothing changed from the town as far as assessing piece is done, no changes to the subdivision, so it has nothing to do with the Town of Acton. But that is the opinion of the attorney.
How you doing, Bruce Ellis, 172 Peacock? I got ahold of Dennis Farabee the other day.
Yes.
He has adjusted my taxes to reflect our easement for that. I'm assuming that wouldn't have been done if there was an issue.
And that doesn't, again, if, if the 19 people don't believe that, that, that attorney or that property owner had the right to give you that easement, that goes back to a private matter. If, if Dennis adjusted it because he saw that and he felt like you had, you had the right to travel over it, then, you know, that's his choice as our assessor. I would like to follow up with him in the conversation. He did tell me you contacted him, so I knew that. But again, it doesn't change the fact of the ownership, and it doesn't change the fact that, you know, did the, did they have the right to give that, that traveling over?
Okay, now, I had, I had talked to Mr. Nickerson the other day, and he said that the 19 people didn't own that property. The 19 people had the right, he went back, looked at the original documents, everything else, he says, those people have the right to use that property, Mildred owns it. And I just, I just had spoke to him two days ago about it, and he, he checked it out, and he also checked with the DEP to see how it was written up, and there's nothing in that that says that these people own it. They have the right to recreational use.
Yeah, and that's, those are all great points if you decide, or they decide to pursue it civilly, but at the end of the day, there's nothing, it has nothing to do with the Town of Acton. And, you know, questioning, questioning whether or not, you know, he had the right to do that deed or create it the way that it was done, or grant those rights, you know, we looked into one thing and one thing only, and that was, did she still own Lot 18? Did she have the right to do that? Lankowski says the exact opposite of Nickerson, that he didn't, shouldn't have written that deed, and he didn't have the right, and that they, she did give away all 18, you know, all 19 pieces of that lot, but that's not a matter that the town's going to pursue, so...
Right, and that's what he said.
Those are good things for you guys to go back and forth. Basically, he recommended that the 19 people, you know, get an attorney and have them pursue it, but as far as the town piece, we updated our records of the common lot, and there's nothing else to do on our end.
Nothing for us, okay. Okay. Very good. Moving on, new business. You don't have anything else to add to that?
No.
No? You also have that?
Yeah.
Moving on, new business, Canal Bridge.
Is Chris here?
Yes.
Hi.
Beautiful.
Hi, I'm Chris Fornier with HEB Engineers. We, this summer, we had been hired by the Town of Wakefield, New Hampshire, to take a look at all of their municipal bridges, and with me today is Kelly Collins, Town Administrator of Wakefield. They had asked us to look at all seven of their municipally-owned bridges and sort of just take stock of the condition of those bridges and assist them with making a plan for future capital improvements to those bridges. And we're working through that plan at this point. That's, we're presenting that plan at a work session on September 14th at 10:00 a.m. over in Wakefield. And one of those seven bridges is the Canal Bridge, which is, as far as we understand it, half in Acton and half in Wakefield. And Elise, you have provided some deeds that, that support that.
Well, yeah, hold that thought. Did you have anybody, I mean, do you guys, have you reviewed those deeds yourself? Do you, is that an area of expertise in your background? Because I don't think the town supports that canal is, is in Acton, correct, Elise?
Correct.
So, have you, I mean, have you actually reviewed them or had somebody review them?
We do have surveyors on staff.
And they have reviewed them and believe that it's in Acton?
We've gone through a cursory review of that, so I guess it's not in our scope of services at this point to do a full, thorough research review of that. But that is the understanding, at least, of, that we've gotten from Maine DOT and New Hampshire DOT, that they've indicated that it does, they think it shares the border, so...
And I think in the past, we have a road committee member that reads the bridge reports every year, and she had mentioned that the DOT, Maine DOT had had it incorrectly as Acton owning it. And in addition to, I think, she mentioned the, when they did the historic piece on it, that in the historical documentations, it did mention that Wakefield owned it.
Was the sole owner.
Sole owner.
Okay.
What'd you say?
Was the sole owner, yeah, that's what the document said.
So, I don't know if you want to look, I don't know who owns those papers now.
Yeah, that, that report's readily available.
Okay.
Yeah, for the, for the National Register, yeah.
Because it's registered, right, as a historical bridge?
Yeah, it's on the National Register. That was back in 2013, I believe it was, 2013 or 14.
So, that essentially is, is the big part of step one, is determining, and not that we don't want to hear what you have to say in your input, but that's, that's a big piece for the, the board here. Does the Town of Wakefield have any, any proof or thoughts on ownership? Anything legal?
Just going to introduce your team, and my heritage commission's allies.
Okay. David looks like he wants to...
I talked to Elise about this last year.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Up to the mic, please.
So, I haven't done a title search on the bridge. We're not anywhere near close to that. I talked to Elise last year and did some cursory. We have bridge files, a lot of them. The Heritage Commission documentation, to the best of my knowledge, all of the canal is ours, to your side of the, of the canal, but there's differing opinions about the bridge, whether it's 50/50. I've also heard that you only have your runoff, but either way, we cannot improve that bridge, fix that bridge unless you fix your approach.
Right.
Your approach is not wide enough, we cannot, even if you only own the approach, New Hampshire DOT is not going to approve the work if you don't improve your approach.
Right, and our road commissioner agreed that he would have money in the budget to do that when the time came.
Is that David's response, son?
David's, so, maybe he could come up and speak too.
So, if, if, if it does turn out to be 50/50, New Hampshire DOT is not going to give us the money unless Maine or Maine DOT will approve their 50%, so...
Okay.
Okay.
And the bridge is in imminent danger of being closed.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and the thing that concerns us about that is the detour is nine miles, so it affects both Acton and Wakefield.
Would the, would the town consider splitting a survey expense with Acton to get a once-and-for-all final answer?
I'm not prepared to commit to any expense. I, I think we should take a look at the historical documentation we already have. I may send that to our town attorney for...
Maybe we should do the same.
A cursory title search, but I don't, I don't think a survey is necessary yet. We'll have to do a full-on survey before construction, so I think that we only want to do that once and not do it for ownership first and then for construction again later.
Are we going to do construction if we don't know who owns it?
Well, I think that doing a title search on, on the historical deeds that we already have is, I, I don't think we need to do a new survey yet. You're, you're welcome to do what you need to do to feel comfortable with it, but I, I'd like to look at this, all the historical documentation first.
And maybe if both towns have their legal teams, you know, research it, hopefully they come back with the same answer and, and we can move forward from there.
Okay.
Yeah, the bridge will be closed eventually either way, so I think that it's in our, all of our best interests to work the problem now, because it's going to be an interstate, potentially, an interstate, whether it's just the approach or the bridge.
Right.
Obviously, it's a bigger project for you if it's 50/50, but it's interstate and historic, so it's, it's going to be a lot of moving parts and take a long time to work through, so I, I'm here just to start that process.
As far as the last 10 years, we've gone over all this and over and over, we've come up to the same conclusion that the canal was owned by New Hampshire. The bridge goes over the canal, okay? The, New Hampshire has taken that over as a historical site. They did it on their own, said it was their bridge. The only way you're going to find out whose bridge is, is surveying it out.
Right.
That's the only way you can do it, you can go through all the documentation like we've been doing for the last 10 years. So, but as far as the last 10 years or so, we've come up to the same conclusion that that bridge is sitting on top of New Hampshire property, because you guys own the, own the canal.
So, if they own it, they should have a title to it, right?
Yeah, so...
I'm just asking, I mean, I don't know, so...
Talking, it was built back in, well, it started before the Civil War and ended after the Civil War, so I mean, I don't doubt there's a title.
Maybe not, I just didn't know.
I don't know how they rolled back then, but nowadays, I'm sure they would be, but...
So, David, if for a moment we assume they owned it, what, talk about the approach piece that you're saying we still need to address.
What, what, what I'm, all I need to see is the engineered plan, I need to know when all this is going to happen. I like to have six months in advance to make sure that I keep the money in the budget, or if I have to ask for more, I can, but I can't do anything with the approach until I see what you guys need, because elevations, everything will change. I'm not going to go do an approach to something that we don't know, you know, what it is, so, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. So, the, the approach is something we've been waiting for, and as far as I know, what we've been told for many years now is that, yeah, the approach has to be done. We weren't talking about doing whole bridge, so, but it's in the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, when, when this went through as a historic district project, both towns and states had to work on it, and we did extensive work on the deeds which we have, and you will find that we do own the approach. I believe they want it 26-foot wide. The one thing that could be addressed on it right now is that from the main side, we're putting a tremendous amount of water flow in, and that should be corrected no matter what as soon as possible. I think you've probably seen the runoff there coming down, but yeah, I think Pam Wigan would be the one to check with, because she worked with us and we did extensive work on all these deeds and walked it.
Okay.
So, as far as schedule is concerned, we've come here at the early stages of our work. I mean, we're, we're looking at seven bridges, so this is one of, of those seven. With regards to the specifics of this bridge, on the New Hampshire side, whether that works out to being the whole bridge or half the bridge, New Hampshire DOT participates in, in the New Hampshire side of the project, so their funding is not available likely until 2026. So, there is time to figure this out. The condition is not getting better, obviously, but that's, that's the anticipated construction schedule at this point, so we have time to budget, we have time to sort out exactly where the ownership lies.
You said 2026?
Yes.
So, you're looking seven, eight years out?
Yeah.
And how long before we think of the, it's going to be closed?
Soon, right?
Like, a year, three years?
Yeah, as far as the condition rating, it's rated a four out of 10, basically. It's been that way for the past 15 years, so...
But it hasn't gotten any worse?
On that scale of rating...
But there's cer, there are some things that could be done perhaps to keep it at a, where it is. Cindy mentioned runoff off the side.
Yeah, I think that's mainly affecting the canal walls themselves.
Oh, the canal walls.
Yeah, but as far as the bridge condition, up, increasing the load rating or doing anything substantial would be quite costly, so the, the hope, I guess at this point with a contingency plan would be to... with a contingency plan, would be to replace the, I'm not replace, but rehabilitate the site when that funding arrives. It'd be the most cost-efficient approach to this. So yeah, I think, I think it may be prudent that both towns sort of take a closer look at those deeds. We'll, we'll do, we'll do a little bit deeper research as well into that, and then further understand. But we wanted to at least come in person, there's been a few emails exchanged, but come in person and introduce ourselves and, and get some collaboration going on this, because it is a, a bigger, longer-term project.
So the 2026 date, that is for New Hampshire funding?
Correct.
Okay. That doesn't mean to say that a wealthy benefactor could come forward and get the bridge done sooner?
Sure.
Okay. Or if the towns wanted to do something together?
Correct.
We can also, we can also borrow the money and then wait for New Hampshire DOT to refund the 80% that they would cover. So we could bond.
Okay.
But again, we have to deal with the interstate piece and the historical piece. So I think that best-case scenario, we're looking at a couple of years to get all our ducks in a row, because we want to make sure that we restore it or rebuild it in the historic way that it exists now. We, we don't want to just span over it and make something modern. We want to keep the flavor of what it is today. And I don't know what that, I don't know what that'll entail, but the town of Wakefield could borrow in anticipation of that 2026 year and then just wait to get reimbursed and carry the, the debt for a few years.
Okay. And then if I could receive a little bit of feedback of the, the importance of that connection along, along that road. Kelly did mention it's a nine-mile detour, but should the unexpected happen and the bridge need to be closed, just, I would appreciate some feedback on at least the financial planning of, of, of outlook on when this needs to happen, of if, if the uneventful happened, would it, would it be available to leave it closed for a certain period of time until it could be replaced, or would some, or would the town seek something more immediate? Just, just an understanding of how that bridge is useful to the town of Acton.
So you're saying that if it were to close, would we try to come up with money to quickly get it fixed?
Perhaps.
Or how would it impact us?
Temporary crossing, perhaps.
Right. How do you do a temporary?
Yeah.
Can you?
Along, along the side.
On the side.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to understand the, the role that that bridge plays in the town of Acton and.
I think it's huge.
Maybe.
Yeah, I don't know what the traffic count is going across there. I don't know.
Do we have a? David, do you have information?
400 a day.
400 a day?
Yes.
Okay. That's substantial.
And so what would happen essentially is that they would reroute to Route 109, or is there another way? 109?
109, or?
I'll be moving.
David, do you have a route?
Is there any other way they'd go?
No.
All the way up?
Oh, 153?
Yep.
To Acton Ridge?
Yeah, it says a nine-mile detour around, so. Either way, that's.
It's not, I don't know, it's a nine-mile detour to go Kellac across.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I, trucks aren't supposed to be on the bridge right now anyways, right?
Right.
Yep.
No, they're not supposed to be, but they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, um.
They use O'Kell.
Yeah.
Oh, they do?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe prudent to step up enforcement of the load posting to perhaps.
That goes back to the bridge. I mean, if it's.
That has been requested by a resident.
Right, but if we don't know who's, I mean, if, if the bridge belongs to New Hampshire, then New Hampshire has to be the one to enforce the posting, correct?
Oh, it has to be enforced on both sides.
Well, I mean, does the Sheriff's Department, do we have any authority if the, if the vehicle is on the New Hampshire side, on the bridge, and we determine that the bridge is in New Hampshire? Does the York County Sheriff's Department have any authority to?
Do we have anything on that road, Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Three tons posted.
Posted the same way?
So that will take care of that.
Problem is, is most sheriffs, like the Sheriff's Department, they're not really familiar with the road posting aspect of it. One thing that we do have in our advantage now, seeing we have our own sheriff, is he is able to do by, go by our town policies.
Right.
So he's able to enforce somewhere. The Sheriff's Department never used to be able to do that before. I do want to meet with our deputy, deputy at some point in time, because we do have other posted roads, and for him to enforce, I don't know if he knows what he's looking for. And, because I, I chase people down all the time, going over to Wakefield or coming back the other way, and three tons is not very much. That's not, a one-ton weighs one, three-ton, empty. So, but really, we, we have to have some enforcement there, because we see them all the time. What happens is the GPS is sending the guys through there. When they get over there, there's no place to turn around on that side, on the New Hampshire side. There is on the main side, but there isn't on the New Hampshire, so they just shoot over it anyways, so. But, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Can we look into seeing how much it would cost to serve, to do a survey and come up with who owns it? I mean, I've been on the board like, for seven years, and we've been working on this thing that long, so.
Absolutely.
I mean, it can't be that much money to survey a piece of property with the bridge. We got the deeds, and to see who owns it.
Yep, I can look into it.
If Wakefield will be, if, you know, if we come up with it and maybe, maybe or maybe not, I don't know if Wakefield would want to chip a little in towards it, whether you could or not, I don't know, but I still think, we still got to know who owns it.
Right, we need to know, we should be putting money aside.
And it makes sense to do it earlier in the process.
And all that, but just put that part of it to bed.
Eight years is a long time, but a bridge is expensive.
I think that if, to do this right, instead of kind of getting bombarded on our side of it, we get some prices on a survey, see if they can get some prices on a survey, get the prices, maybe a split in half. I do have money in my budget if I need to do that, okay? If it's not absorbently stupid, you know, something like that, something that I can absorb in my budget, I can do that. But I think this is something we're going to have to split half and half, because they're coming to us asking us to spend our money. They should be doing the same.
It's also about people going over the road, you know, a lot of people using the road too, so. Just trying to come up with a cure, so.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for? Thanks. Okay. General Assistance Public Hearing.
We scheduled a public hearing for next, next Tuesday, September 11th at 5:00 PM. This is for the yearly changes to the general assistance. I'll email you the amendments as presented by the board, ah, as presented by the state, this, based on county, people, how many people living in the household, et cetera.
Okay.
ECO position.
After careful consideration, Mr. Hamm has decided that he would like to step down from the position. I don't have a resignation to present to you tonight, but he has asked that we start advertising and looking for the position, looking for someone. This is, you know, a conversation that the board needs to think about having in more detail, you know, as, as far as what and how, or if we can tie it to another position in town. It's, it's just one of those positions that, you know, for a $450 a month stipend, they are expected to be on call 24/7. You know, right now, he's got, I think he told me, five dogs in quarantine. You know, so it's, I mean, you know, the bites come in the middle of the night, he's expected to go, loose dogs, loose cats. I mean, it's every single day, it's, it's something. And he's just, it's more effort than it's worth. And unfortunately, that's why you're last one left as well, because you, you just can't plan anything. You can't.
It would be nice to see it as a two-person, so that they could trade, do some kind of trading off, so you do have some.
So then you get down to, you know, so you're going to pay them $225 a month, and let's say if one person does Monday, you know, if you have a schedule.
Right.
I mean, it's tough.
So we'll be increasing that line next year.
Yeah.
It's not worth it. There's too many people with animals, not just domestic, I mean, they have farm animals.
Right, right. And he just, I mean, it's, you know, and he, he does such a good job, and he's very diligent in his work, and, you know, and it's just.
Oh, he's taking it right to hat, so.
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely. And he's done very well. So if anybody has retired.
Mike did two prior to him, so. I said, Mike did two prior to him.
I know.
Yeah, he just, I mean, they, you know, they wouldn't get a call for two or three days, and then, you know, you'd get one four days in a row, and all hours of the night. It's just not, you know, for the stipend.
Yep. Okay.
Dennis, you want to think about that?
Think, think again. Okay, so we have an opening in the animal control office, so. Okay. Thursday office hours.
So it's officially fall, or so they tell me. You guys want to start picking up your Thursday hours? Do you want to just kind of play it by ear? As we're going into the winter, do you think, do you hear, are you hearing much from your constituents about?
I haven't heard hardly. I think I had two people come in, in the course of, what, eight months, as we shut it down a little bit in the summer.
I feel the same way. I mean, I don't mind being here, but people aren't coming in. I mean, I don't know if it's because it's too late, but at the same time, we're trying to accommodate the people that can't be here at 5:00.
We've tried both hours. I think we did 5:00 to 6:00. We've done 7:00 to 8:00.
We've done 6:00 to 7:00, too.
Yeah.
I mean, and I feel like for the most part, I mean, 95, 98% of your town will, you know, they'll just come in and address the issue. We'll get one of you on the phone, depending on who the liaison is, and just kind of deal with it right on the spot. We don't get a lot of people that just walk in and something we can't address.
And that doesn't mean that we wouldn't be available if someone has an issue, to make an, make an appointment.
Right.
And we could still, I mean, I'm available, you know, shoot in, and talk to someone Thursday nights, so.
Me too.
So just keep them off the books for now and see what they need?
I think so.
Could be by appointment.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to come in, you know, one of us will be available to come in.
Okay.
I think I've had maybe two pop-ins, so, and the rest were kind of more scheduled.
I try to throw them all to you when you're sitting there for that hour.
Okay, and we'll suspend the office hours, the Thursday night off, off, office hours for now. Be okay. And item E, the thing that keeps the town going, tax bills.
So they have been mailed. You should be getting yours any day. If you don't, let's see, today's Tuesday. If you don't have it by this time next Tuesday, certainly give my office a call, or they'll be available online. But you should be getting them. I know a few people have come in already and, and paid them, so some even before the bills came out. So, but they are out.
Okay.
And remember, please, that we have to send the owner, the bill to the owner of record as of April 1st. So please read all the fine print before you call the office. If you sold your property after April 1st, you're required to get it to the new owner. If you have a mortgage company, you are required to mail your bill to the mortgage company so that they'll pay it on your behalf. Thank you.
Public comment.
My name is Celia Thibodeau. I'm just wondering with all of, we have so many homeowners that are on the lake, and we have a lot of lake owners that support the tax base. Are you planning on pursuing an ordinance for mooring, or is that going to be a civil matter as well? Because mooring is really a problem in our cove as well, and in other areas on the lake. Just wondering.
I would, I would think we could pursue the ordinance.
We could, depending what the.
If we do that, how are we going to?
Who is going to enforce it, that's the question.
Who's going to enforce it?
Look at your code enforcement department now, and this has nothing to do with the subject, but just in general. Look at your code enforcement department now, look at how many inspections they have, look at how long it takes to get a building permit at this point, and then think about, you know, adding boats onto it. I mean, it may pass, an ordinance may be great, but you have to have a plan at the end of the day. Who is going to go out there and tell the boats they need to move?
Yeah, you can't pass an ordinance that's unenforceable.
But I don't think that's a reason not to make an ordinance.
No, I just want to make sure you have a plan, a backup plan as far as.
The backup plan would be to increase hours in code enforcement and, and maybe hire, you know, maybe the de, the deputy's code enforcement at works lot more hours. I don't know.
What about the constable?
Right there, they're both at about 40 now.
What's that?
I said, they are both at about 40 now, just so you know.
Yeah. Does the state, we don't know if the state has any.
It's a busy office.
Rules and regulations. So it may fall under something like that.
Say that again.
You may not need something.
Well, the state's trying to say that it's up to the town.
No, and, but remember, our attorney said that wasn't an accurate, I mean, nothing, I mean, our attorney said that that wasn't accurate, that the inland fisheries, or they would not have said that, that the only town, the town only has authority if they have an ordinance that, regarding the placement of them. But it wasn't our, I, I mean, I passed that along to, to Mr. Lankowski, and he said that was not, the state wouldn't delegate that to us without a ordinance in place.
Okay, so the state doesn't have any ordinances or any rules and regulations?
I haven't spoken to a warden directly. That's just, that's what, I went back to him with their concerns.
Okay.
As Elise had printed out something, that's why I was.
Right, and, and that's an ordinance that says, if you read.
I don't know if she has it or not.
State law, it says if the town has an ordinance, is how it started.
Is this the, the Title 38?
Yep.
I had it highlighted in another copy. I have to read through it again.
I think it's in the first paragraph.
"In all harbors wherein channel lines have been established by the municipal officers, as provided in Section 2, in all other coastal and tidal waters, harbors, and great ponds, where mooring rights of individuals are claimed to be invaded and protection is sought of the harbor master. The harbor masters shall assign the, and indicate only to the masters or owners of boats and vessels the location that they may occupy for mooring purposes, and shall change the location of those moorings from time to time, when the crowded condition of that harbor or great pond, the need to conform to Section 7A or other conditions render the change desirable." So not having a harbor master, that would be the code enforcement?
I believe so, unless you, I mean, you probably have the right to delegate it to someone else with proper compensation.
Unless permitted by an ordinance.
Which, yeah, that was the line.
Mooring assignments may not be transferred. Assignments may not be rented. So we don't really, because we don't have an, there's no assignments.
Right.
Well, I guess my issue is that, excuse me, with the people that were here prior, with the Ellis's, you know, they have three boats, either a pontoon boat, a, what do they call it, jet ski, and another boat out there. We have people from up, upper on Peacock Road that have, actually have four items out, a dock, a jet ski, a boat, paddleboat, and another mooring out there. And they really have no right to be in that cove, so.
I mean, if you go on to read, it talks about having waterfrontage to moor.
Right, and they have no waterfrontage, so.
What happens, what happens if you're one of the 19, right?
Yes.
Okay, just, just say we did an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So you get one, you, you get one mooring.
That's correct.
For all 19 of your people. How are you going to figure?
I don't know. If you have 19 people that have legal right to their property.
There's no way we could put 19 moorings on that little.
No, I understand that.
Right, but.
Right. But if the, if you look at the plan, the, there are probably 10 or 11 people that already have waterfront property.
Okay.
So they don't care anyway.
Okay, so then it would lower down.
Right. So that would be, the only issue that some of them have that have waterfront property is that boats are coming in and just mooring in front of their property, even though they don't have legal access to be there. So, and I think that with the lake supporting, lake ownership supporting the big tax base, I think it would behoove you to consider an ordinance.
Should we maybe do like we just did with this? I mean, does, no?
I don't.
Because do you think?
I think it makes sense to have an ordinance. I think that enforcement, it's, it's not going to be, it's just going to be a few. You know, you send a letter, you don't rent property.
Seriously, seriously, there's, in our cove, there's only two that are violating, and some of the others, well, the other people are gone already, but some of the other people that are here have issues of the same thing in front of their homes, so, and they have waterfront property. So it would be few and far in between, but you have to have an ordinance in, before you can even start doing anything.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Leslie Berlin. I have a concern about the executive session that was called earlier today. I pulled up the statute, and subsection 3 says, "Procedure for the calling of an executive session. An executive session may be called only by a public recorded vote of three-fifths of the members present in voting of such bodies or agencies."
No.
Subsection 4 says, "Motion contents. A motion to go into executive session must indicate the precise nature of the business of the executive session and include a citation of one or more of the sources of a statutory or other authority that permits such an, an executive session." I only saw one of these requirements fulfilled, and that was stating the statutory authority. I didn't see anywhere where there was a vote, a public vote, nor was there a precise nature of the business cited.
I don't think the public doesn't vote on a executive session.
No, just.
It's just a story.[1788.62]
It's just that...
The board does. And you, there was not, to my understanding, there was not a public vote. I was here at last week's selectmen's meeting, there was not a vote on that. There was not a vote before you went into it, and the notice that was put on the Acton webpage did not state the precise nature of the business.